Welcome to April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor West.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Londo.
Here.
Councilmember Laquiro.
Here.
Councilmember Wuss.
Here.
Approval of the agenda as presented.
Move approval of the agenda as presented.
Support.
Discussion additions, deletions. Agenda is approved. Special presentation resolution zero four dash one three dash twenty-four supporting statutory revenue sharing reform. Obolter?
Mr. Mayor, in speaking with Mayor Protem Alyssa Sullivan, she's been in contact with several other council members from other communities in the area, and they've decided to once again take a look at an issue that has been near and dear to my heart since I became city manager. You know well, you know well, as does Councilman Laquiro through the many years that we have seen decline after decline after decline in state share revenues from the state of Michigan, and they give us a few extra percents and think their hero is up there because they've increased revenue sharing, when in fact we're still down over a million dollars a year, and that's not even adjusting anything for inflation since early. So I will defer now to Alyssa to speak a little bit more on this matter.
This has been the passionate brainchild of Mayor Protem of Ferndale Laura McCulsky in collaboration with a bunch of other local municipalities, and I'm really proud to bring it to our city as well. When we talk about the funding for our community, there are limitations to our revenue sources, and one of those is the state revenue sharing. What we have experienced since two thousand and three, thanks to Lacy Christensen pulling up these numbers, we have suffered over twenty-six million dollars in deficit because of the lack of revenue sharing at the state level. That's a huge number. That's a huge number to our community. It's a huge number to our residents and our taxpayers here, and this resolution is trekking along in other communities as well in a goal to call more attention to the subject.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes.
I do get my reading glasses from the finest dollar stores in the state of Michigan.
[laughing].
Resolution of the City Council of Hazel Park, Michigan urging state leaders to address the inadequacy of state revenue sharing and encouraging other Michigan cities to join in this effort. Whereas the city of Hazel Park, along with other local governments in Michigan, relies on state revenue sharing to provide essential services to its residents. And whereas state revenue sharing in Michigan is divided into two types, constitutional and statutory, with the latter being subject to legislative appropriations. And whereas the city of Hazel Park has experienced a significant reduction in statutory revenue sharing, impacting the city's ability to fund essential services adequately, a challenge shared by many cities across Michigan. And whereas projections calculated and provided by the Michigan Municipal League indicate a concerning trend for the city of Hazel Park with a yearly underfunded amount over one million dollars annually with a cumulative unfunded amount of approximately twenty-six million dollars since two thousand and two. And whereas state revenue sharing has historically accounted for approximately a quarter of Hazel Park's general fund budget. And whereas this reduction in statutory revenue sharing places an undue financial strain on the city of Hazel Park and other Michigan cities, necessitating either cuts in essential services or increased local taxation, both of which adversely affect residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Hazel Park, Michigan hereby urges the governor of Michigan, the Michigan State Legislature, and other state leaders to: One, acknowledge the critical importance of statutory revenue sharing for the financial stability of local governments and the well-being of their residents. Two, reassess and amend the current approach to statutory revenue sharing to ensure more stable and adequate funding for local governments. Three, consider the long-term implications of reduced statutory revenue sharing on the quality of life in Michigan communities. Four, engage in open and collaborative discussions with local government representatives, including a coalition of Michigan cities, to develop a more equitable and sustainable revenue sharing model. And be it further resolved that the city of Hazel Park encourages other Michigan cities to adopt similar resolutions, hereby creating a unified voice to address this critical issue effectively. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to the governor of Michigan, the Michigan State Legislature, local government associations, and municipalities across Michigan.
Thank you, sir.
Adopted this ninth day of April, two thousand and twenty-four.
We got you.
And did you want?
Like to go to the next resolution.
Want to move that?
I would have a comment, please.
Do you want me to? Can I make a motion for this one?
Yes.
Sorry. I'd like to make a motion for the city council to approve resolution supporting statutory revenue sharing reform, Revenue Sharing Trust Fund.
Support, and I have a comment, though.
Go ahead.
They did just pass, we can't let them get away with calling the trust fund that they created enough. It's not enough.
No, again, I think, I think this is one of the casualties of the severe term limits in that there's absolutely no institutional memory in this legislature or in this executive office in terms of the adverse impact that those cuts have had over the course of the last two decades. Again, every other area of state funding has seen their funding reach pre-crash levels and pre-COVID levels except for cities, and they don't really remember and understand the critical component that revenue sharing is of local government funding. So we're hopeful that this effort will be a very important educational tool for the legislature and for the voters in these communities and the residents so that they know the history of this and why Michigan's system of municipal finance is the worst system in the entire fifty states of the United States.
Changed it up.
And it all started with, part of it with Prop A in nineteen ninety-four, and that was the beginning of it. And again, the term limit started after that, and it's caused a downhill effect on everything along with the state House and legislators not knowing the inherent history, like you said.
No, and again, sometimes it was down, it was down two million dollars during the, during the depths of the Great Property Value Crash and the Great Recession post-two thousand and eight. At the same time, the city was losing over fifty percent of its taxable value, we were also hammered with deep cuts to revenue sharing, so pretty much.
And to put it in perspective, twenty-six million dollars is one and a half times our annual budget, just to give you an idea what that would reflect to us.
How about another little perspective? In two thousand and twenty-three, we're going to get two point four million. In two thousand and three, twenty years ago, we got five hundred thousand dollars more than that.
Right.
Think about inflation and cost of living and everything that's changed over twenty years, and we're, we're now getting less, even less than what we were getting two decades ago.
We're not even getting cost of living for the cities and townships to afford the cost of living for our employees so we can have better services.
Right.
That's what it boils down to.
I'm really grateful for, for the hard work that Laura has put into this and to the other communities.
Thank you for bringing that too.
Thank you so much, and for the other communities to step into these shoes and really speak up to our legislator, legislature, and really encourage them, you know, these are the, these are the things that are important to us. These are the things that affect your neighbors, your constituents, your families that live here in Michigan. These are.
For years to come. This isn't just short term.
Yep. We're working on another resolution as well, so.
Good, thank you.
See you next month.
If we have any more discussion, any dissension?
Thank you.
I vote, I think that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
One thing that's really close to me and dear to me is autism. We all have someone in our family or someone we know as a child or an adult that has autism. And April is one of those months for autism awareness, and I think it's something we should all recognize more so than we usually do. Whereas the month of April is globally, globally acknowledged as Autism Awareness Month, dedicated to increasing awareness, understanding, and whereas autism is a developmental disorder in variable severities that is characteristic by difficulties in social interaction and communication and in restriction and repetitive patterns of thought and behavior, requiring greater recognition and understanding to ensure that all individuals living with it can understand, understood as persons fully capable of functioning and contributing to our society. And whereas in two thousand and twenty-one, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention determined that approximately one fifth, one in fifty-four children, sorry, is diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas the United States General Assembly adopted resolution sixty-two slash one thirty-two on December eighteenth, two thousand and seven, to designate April second as World Autism Awareness Day, to be observed every year. And whereas many organizations and foundations are working to create, promote opportunities for people with autism through advocacy, education, economic opportunities, and humanitarian efforts. And whereas the city Hazel Park Council recognizes that each person with autism has a set of strengths, strengths and challenges, and encourages autism awareness through educational efforts that seek to support people with autism and their families. Whereas autism should not and does not preclude one living a fulfilling life, sorry, my tongue twisted, with the proper care and acknowledgement that systemic barriers people with autism face in their daily life experiences, and we all see that with some of our friends and family. Whereas the city of Hazel Park recognizes the stigma of children and adults with autism and their contributions to society, and hereby expresses admiration for them by declaring that autism is not a disability, is a different ability. And that whereas the city Hazel Park is a community of compassion, loving, and charitable residences, and recognizes to support individuals with autism by fostering a learning environment and community that embraces. Neurodiverse, neurodiversity, that one got me, and promotes inclusivity and strays impacting social communicating behavior and sensory experiences. And, there we go. Now therefore be it resolved that April will be recognized as Autism Awareness Month in the city Hazel Park, and the city council calls all the residences to learn more about autism and, and the life lived experiences of those with autism and autism spectrum disorder, from people with autism and work to build a more welcoming and inclusive community for people with autism. Thank you. Therefore be resolved, the city council Hazel Park and myself declare this to be a resolution. Have a motion too, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution recognizing Autism Awareness Month.
Support. Any dissension, discussion? Motion passes. Kind of means a little more to me than just the resolution, sorry. Okay, the civic announcements, I have one from Kathy Haw. Would you like to come up?
Hi, my name is Kathleen Hall. I'm one-one-four-one East Milton, Hazel Park. I'm here on behalf of Saint Justin Saint Mary Magdalene Church. We're having our rummage and bake sale on the nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first of April, just coming up next week. There's special pricing on Sunday. We have a lot of sale items, toys, housewares, furniture, and it is a bake sale. There's also a raffle on, it'll take place on Sunday. The tickets are a dollar apiece. Five hundred is first prize, second prize is a hundred dollar Kroger gift card, and third prize is a fifty dollar Meyer gift card. So I just wanted to bring that to attention. Is it all right if I leave some flyers here?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Can we get that notice on our, on our, on our?
Definitely have the flyers, yes.
Thank you. Any other civic announcements from the audience? Community announcements? Or close civic announcements? Public discussion. I know we even, I just want to bring something up before we open up public discussion. I know in the past few months, we've had some people come up and express their feelings about their ceasefire resolution request. I'd like to say a comment to you, we all thank you for coming out and participating in the democratic process. We appreciate you coming here to express your thoughts and concerns, but over the past few, several meetings, several of you have spoken of this subject, we as a council have made a decision to only consider resolutions that affect the city Hazel Park and not a national issue. Therefore, the board will not be passing a resolution on this matter, but you're, you're more willing to freely speak as your right is to do so today. Thank you. If you'd like to come up, you can, it's a three-minute holding. Stella, let's see, Mike Flores, would you like to come up first? I'm sorry, I lost this paper.
Buenos dias, good evening, city council. My name is Mike Flores. I'm a proud Hazel Park resident, and I reside on Manatee Avenue. All who celebrate Ramadan, I wish you a happy Eid al-Fitr, and I also want to acknowledge that April is Arabic American Heritage Month, celebrating the contributions of Arab Americans in the USA. I stand before you today with a heavy heart and a sense of urgency that can no longer be ignored by this council. This is the third time the community comes before you to plead for your support in advocating for a ceasefire resolution to protect humanity and promote peace in Israel and Palestine. Recently, I had the opportunity to visit my family in Texas and spend time with my youngest nieces and nephews, these innocent children, an American, as American as apple pie, with beautiful brown eyes and at a single care or hardship, but I couldn't enjoy the moment. Their faces reminded me of the faces of almost fourteen thousand innocent children whose lives have been tragically lost in the conflict. As I shared my, as I shared playful moments with my nieces and nephews, I couldn't shake the image of children being murdered by American bombs. I'm trying to reconcile my American values with their divergent American actions or lack thereof. I'm trying to understand how local, state, federal government can speak of values but not take the bare minimum step to support a ceasefire resolution to protect humanity. I'm trying to reconcile while this council, at the end of every meeting, asks parents and families to hug their children and loved ones, but does not support a ceasefire to protect children yearning for a safe embrace. I'm trying to understand how council can speak about the importance of education but not support a ceasefire to protect schools from being bombed, depriving children of the opportunity to learn. I'm trying to reconcile a council that values the arts but does not support a ceasefire to protect museums, archaeological sites where more than a hundred heritage sites have been destroyed. I'm trying to understand how this council values and understands the importance of women in our society, but does not support a ceasefire to protect innocent civilian women whom have been disproportionately impacted. I'm trying to reconcile how this council, at, at the end of every council meeting, reminds us of Michigan's municipal finance system is fundamentally broken, but does not support a ceasefire to stop funding this genocide and demand those dollars be reinvested in our local community, almost ninety million dollar per year from the state of Michigan alone. Please help me reconcile why the great city of Hazel Park is unable to be guided by our values to support a ceasefire that upholds principles. Please help me reconcile this disparity and join me in taking a stand for peace, humanity, and for the values we hold dear. Please bring forward, vote yes, on a ceasefire resolution that reflects the values of Hazel Park. As always, council, gracias, and thank you for your attention, your guidance, and consideration.
Thank you. Stella Roth?
Hi, my name is Stella Roth, and I have lived in Hazel Park since two thousand and nineteen, and I've been an activist for Palestine for twenty-two years. And I wrote a poem this morning and decided to come out. Across the world, two Great Lakes, an ocean, and a sea away, a man is shot while waiting in line for flour. This is not a local issue. In that same place, Rafa, Chaza, a woman's tent is robbed. This is not a local issue. In that same, in the Holy Land far away, a foreign army receives a shipment, multi-billion dollars worth of arms. This is not a local issue. In Hazel Park, Michigan, I receive a message from an old friend in Rafa, Palestine. He is still alive. He says, "Don't worry, dear." But his brother-in-law was just killed waiting in line for flour, and his sister-in-law's tent was robbed. So I call my representatives, I attend city council meetings, and tell them about my friends in Chaza. At night, I cry, I am losing sleep and hair. My grief streams wall-to-wall through my home in Hazel Park. Wait, maybe this is a local issue. In DC, taxes I paid in Hazel Park, Michigan for my local bookstore job are being divided. A portion is being spent on an armed shipment for the Israeli Defense Army. This is becoming a local issue. Mashallah, Inshallah, Yahabibi, Palestinian. These words are being learned by non-Arab people in Hazel Park, Michigan. New words for a new era. This is a local issue. Our residents are putting ceasefire stickers everywhere on stop signs in grocery stores. We are banging pots and pans for Palestine every night at eight PM. We won't give up. It's a point of pride now. We have become a haunting. This is a local issue. Ahmed tells me, "Still alive, dear," while he drinks seawater, and I march at the corner of Nine and John R. for him. This is a local issue. We are shouting with our American voices, our Michigan voices, our Hazel Park voices, ceasefire now. This is a local issue. Our community is suffering. We are standing together. We're saying no to genocide, which starts two Great Lakes, an ocean, and a sea away. But don't larger world issues always find their way home? This is a local issue. Sound the alarm bells. The genocide in Chaza has found us, crying and marching and shouting in Hazel Park, Michigan. This is a local issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Baroni Nwosh?
Hi, thank you. My name, excuse me, it's going to be hard for me. My name's Manai Nawash. I'm a Palestinian-American. I live at two-six-one-three-one Wolverine in Madison Heights. I came to this meeting today because of my ties to Hazel Park. I shop and eat here. I've brought my son to the library for many years. Ms. Amy is a diamond librarian. She's wonderful. I've even used Alyssa's cat, City and Services, in the past. I have very close ties to Palestine as my father was forced from his home when he was seven and became a refugee. Before his life turned upside down, he grew up in a quiet town outside of Jerusalem, where John the Baptist lived in biblical times, and according to my DNA test, my ancestors date back a thousand years there, if not more. I keep asking myself why it is so hard for leaders in the US to call for killing to stop in Gaza, to call for a permanent ceasefire. I think back to when I was growing up as a child in the US. I was always fearful to say, "I'm Palestinian-American." Much of this fear came because, like my friends and classmates, I too watched movies and TV shows where the only image of my people were portrayed as terrorists. In the media, I rarely saw the daily victimization that was happening to us by Israel. I came to understand how people could destroy another people, whether it was during slavery, the Holocaust, the Rwandan genocide, during apartheid in South Africa. You first have to dehumanize the group before you can allow atrocities to be done to them. You have to make them into the other. We all understand numbers. We all know that thirty-three thousand is a much bigger number than twelve hundred. So why does thirty-three, thirty-three thousand Palestinians killed mean nothing? It is due to the long history of dehumanization. It allows us to believe that, the lie that Hamas is using two million Palestinians in Gaza as human shields when we know Hamas is fighting from tunnels, not from the buildings that Israel destroys. Israel has the greatest military technology. They easily use AI to do targeted killings in other countries. However, when it comes to Gaza, that technology is not to be found, but instead they use what even Biden says are dumb bombs. Israel has dropped the equivalent of three atomic bombs on Gaza, bombs whose whole purpose is to wreak massive destruction. This is why whole neighborhoods have been leveled. So what does all this have to do with Hazel Park? This destruction is being funded by our tax dollars, tax dollars of Hazel Park residents. People in Hazel Park just want to be able to afford groceries, their rent or mortgage. They want enough funding for their children to get a good education. So why did Congress just approve another three-point-eight billion of our tax dollars to be sent to Israel to continue the destruction on the Palestinians? Another fourteen billion is in the works to send to Israel. They say eleven billion could end homelessness in the US. Through all this, I hope that something will finally change. I hope because we have more allies than ever, including some of our strongest allies from the Jewish community. I know that if you saw what we have seen, you too would call for a permanent ceasefire. Watch the videos, please. Follow Middle East Eye, where you will see what we see, and you will no longer be able to sit silent. Please call for a permanent ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula DeBelle?
Hi, I'm Paula Marie DeBelle from Sterling Heights. My daughter here is from Hazel Park, and I want to reiterate the fact that our, our tax money is going directly towards this. That's why I see it as definitely a local issue. I was in Palestine on a peace mission with priests and nuns in two thousand and three, and what I saw there then absolutely shocked me. I was not prepared. I had PTSD for eight months after. We were at checkpoints where we'd help people cross, the Palestinians cross the checkpoints because they were always being harassed by the Israeli army or the Israeli police for no reason at all. I seen young students at random being grabbed and strangled and throwing their heads against the wall. I thought one guy was going to be strangled to death by the border police. I seen them when the Palestinians at night would cover up their wares that they were selling, just take a knife, the Israeli soldiers, and just slice it down so all the apples and oranges would fall off. Our tax money is going towards supporting this, and they had highways then, and they still do, that only Israelis can drive on, and this goes through Palestinian land. And if a Palestinian is caught on there, they'll be shot on sight. And I was there when they were putting up the apartheid wall that now fences in Gaza, and so the people of Gaza have no place to go. And if they come within a certain point of it, they're automatically shot by automatic guns up there. That's why it was so strange what happened on October seventh. And this, this defense, everything is being supported by our tax dollars. And the settlements, by the way, are huge mansions. The Palestinians are not allowed to go there. They're being harassed with them all the time, and they live in huge mansions. These are not little tents or campouts, I expected when I heard the words settlements. And that's all I wanted to say. I do believe it's a local, definitely a local, because we are the biggest supporter of Israel. Thank you.
Thank you. And Suhera, G-H-A-N-N-A-M?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Suhera Ganam. I'm a Palestinian-American. I live in Huntington Woods, but I come to Hazel Park because family and friends live here. Exactly thirty years ago, in April nineteen ninety-four, a genocide was committed against civilian population in Rwanda. That was during Bill Clinton's presidency. President Bill Clinton later said it was his biggest regret of his presidency that he didn't take an action against the genocide, and he ascribes that his inaction is lack, because of lack of public pressure. Public pressure is important. Every individual and local government's voice, our little voices matter. You can't see and work and act as if you haven't seen. At this beautiful city of Hazel Park, we can do our very small part by calling for peace, by calling stopping the killing, stopping the starvation, and stopping the destruction of the social network in Gaza. This is everyone's responsibility. Per the International Court of Justice, governments have the, have to stop genocide anywhere. We have a responsibility in what is done in our name in Gaza. As individuals and, and as local governments, we ask that we have to do more. And sometimes we ask ourselves, you know, when heinous crimes are committed, what would we should have done? Now there is one happening, and we're witnessing the acts, and we're asked that city of Hazel Park take a stand on that. It's a local issue, and the worst part about these heinous acts that. It's a local issue. And the worst part about these heinous acts, that good people like you, like us, witness these acts and decide to do nothing. Please consider adding a ceasefire resolution to your next meeting agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Trina, is it? Osobe?
Tanya.
Tanya, is that? I just couldn't read it.
I got you.
He certainly wasn't gonna answer.
Maybe you had a little fancy writing there. I couldn't read it. It's okay.
Mike forgot how to read cursive.
It's a little on the edge, but very pretty though.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Council. Tanya, at the intersection of Otis and Merrill. So today, I just have a few quick issues. One, I want to thank Council, DPW, and Clobisher for the grounding of the stumps that came rather early. I was happy to see that. So thank you very much for that. The second issue, with many of residents, I'm very empathetic to their calls and cries for Gaza. I've traveled the world. I've seen poverty in depth, though I understand where they're coming from. I also know for a fact that 1.3 women, newborns, and children die in Africa annually. But I understand the extent of what City Council is and isn't able to do. So for me, as a resident that lives here in Hazel Park, I like to try and effect change for what I can see when I open my eyes and look out the door. One of those things happens to be Ed, the digital sign speed readers. Well, I know we've had multiple discussions about this. I think I was under the impression that it was purchased, so I'm just looking to have some updates on when I can see that. The weather is gorgeous. Kids are out playing. The smallest swing sets for infants are closest to the curb. We saw people that speed outrageously through the intersection. We have kids that run across the street and catch their balls and things like that. So I'm eager to see some of that change because I can see that park from my window. Secondly, we have a general few members, some that weren't here today, that are also interested in being part of the beautification committee, for which I know there's some changes that are going to come. But they weren't here today to represent themselves, so they did want me to turn in their application. And for that, I thank you.
I have an update for you. The two digital speed readers that we, speed recorders that we ordered just arrived today. So they should be up. And you are getting one at Otis and Merrill.
Thank you.
That's a tough intersection, especially with the park in the way. It's a three-way. It makes it a little difficult.
Yeah. And again, something else we could look at, too, is there used to be a stop sign there decades ago. So, I mean, we can see if this will work. If not, then we'll just bring a traffic control order to City Council.
And we'll tell you that the stop sign that was reinstated at Scout Park there, that did make a big impact.
Yeah. Yeah. So we may, we may just be looking at, we're looking at now just doing maybe a traffic control order for that as well. So that should...
Three minutes is up.
Nice thing about stop sign, too, is it's very low cost to us because we have our own sign machine. So that's a nice step forward. I was gonna ask, too, about the installation of more light-up crosswalks in areas, in neighborhoods with parks. Is that something we can look into as well during traffic studies and stuff?
That would have, yeah, that's something that we would have to take a look at.
We have that work study next week.
We got a work study. We can take a look at that. That's something to take a look at.
That's something I wanted to talk about as well, how we can get better.
Well, yeah, we did do, we did do the stop sign at Scout Park a couple of years ago, and that, I think, did control some of the speed.
That was a big, I didn't think it would make that big a difference.
That's why I said, we may just, it just, this is maybe a stop sign.
It made a huge difference.
So...
You can add additional signs. Some people are cognizant.
Yep. Yep. And like I said, I saw the chief. He would be here. He had dental surgery today. So we wish Chief Buchholz well. He's in some pain. So, but he did tell me before he left to have his procedure that, I saw him in the parking lot tonight, let them know we've got the speed machines. They're here. So...
Megan?
We have them.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Megan Cleary, as you know, from East Granite, part of the Tree Coalition. I just wanted to thank everyone for publishing the data. We got all the data on the website. It looks great. I sent it to Lawrence at DNR, and he said that's even better than other cities around us. So that's very exciting. Mayor Webb, I took your advice. I talked to Tom at DPW. We're gonna meet.
He did a nice job with the grafting, didn't he?
With the what?
He did a nice job with the color coding, the grafting.
Yeah, the grafting. Very nice.
Very nicely done.
Very nicely done. And I also talked to him yesterday, and I guess 60 people in Section 7 have requested tree plantings, which is great. He also, I connected him with the Oakland County Arborist. They have a free arborist that can come anytime, and they're track certified. So to Ed's point, they're certified in liability, and they're like a second pair of eyes to come and look at liability. And they did a ride around last week, I think, and Tom seemed to think that was really helpful. So awesome. The other thing I wanted to bring up was Tree City USA. I know we talked about it before. I've got a couple of things here. One of the things that, there's like four standards to do the Tree City certification. And one of them is they need a proclamation to declare an Arbor Day in Hazel Park. That's like one of the four things they request. So anyway, I brought that. I'll give that to you guys.
You can give that to Melissa Schwartz, if you don't mind.
Okay, yes, I will. Perfect. And then, let's see what else. I'm gonna apply for beautification committee as well. And the other big thing is that the Department of Natural Resources has, their grants are gonna open soon. And they have a grant called the IRA Grant, which is $100,000. And it can be used for anything related to urban forestry. So it can be supplies, maintenance, equipment, planning, staff training. And it will also pay for this qualification called ISA Tree Risk Assessment Qualification, which is a layer of protection for the city with liability. And it's a certification that, like, Tom could get it, and, you know, one other person in DPW or whatever.
That sounds pretty interesting.
It's low cost. It's $400. DNR will cover it, and it gives another layer of protection to the city as well.
You talked to Tom about that as well?
I did, yeah. And then I think he's, Lawrence and he and I, I think, are gonna meet, like, this week or next week. Yeah. So I feel like things are on track. But...
Ten seconds.
Sorry. Okay. So I'll hand you the Tree City stuff, and I would just like to keep in touch.
Thank you. Thank you.
I really appreciate you continuing on this. I think there are so many opportunities for the current tree initiatives that we have going with collaborative initiatives alongside, and even independent of some of the things we already have going. So thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah, let's connect.
I'd just thank you for your dedication on this particular issue and opening your eyes to a couple of different ideas.
Oh, cool. Awesome. Cool. Great. Thanks.
Make it a little taller. Ryan Bischoff, 1309 East Milton. I just wanted to come up here and say thank you to everyone that I've met over the last couple of weeks. I've been known as the vote no to the sign guy. You know, I've had people invite me into their homes, tell me their stories. I, you know, I've had people wondering where school buses are going to come from for the kids who are, who parents who have to walk their kids to school every day. I've seen people who just, they can't afford the taxes we already have and don't even think a zero millage is gonna help them. You know, just retirees who've seen problems in the administration don't like what's going on here. And I've been told thank you so many times over the last couple of weeks, and I just wanted to come up here and give it back. So we passed out about 200 signs so far. We're currently out, but we'll have another 100 in this week. So if anyone needs them, I'll be leaving a comment on the stream. You can get ahold of me.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else want to come up and speak during public discussion? Last call. Seeing no one, we close public discussion. Council, the Senate Agenda 1 through 8.
Move approval of the consent agenda, items 1 through 8.
Support. A discussion, assention, passes. Anyone here for 2228 John R. Elang Kar Kondis USA Inc. Business license approved. 2115 John R. HP 2.0 LLC, business license approved. And 22842 John R. N. Nails, business approved. We have a license. Takes to a administrative report, item 1, ordinance to repeal sections 2.100.010 through 2.100.1250 of Chapter 2.100- 1989 Retirement Plan Title II, second reading. Hold all that right. Motion to approve on the second reading.
Move approval of ordinance number 4-24.
Support.
Sorry.
Changes, discussion?
Again, Mr. Mayor, for the public satisfaction, this is basically a housekeeping issue with respect to the ordinance. It's striking, it's taking language from the ordinance that is no longer relevant because it was rendered invalid by a previous action of council. It's simply striking the unnecessary verbiage from the ordinance.
Thank you. Takes us to item 2, ordinance to amend the Hazel Park Municipal Code Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.4, expense of emergency response as follows. Mr. Clobisher?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will defer to City Attorney, Mr. Schwartz, on this matter. This is simply an updating of our fines.
Thank you. Yes, 10.40.060. This is just for fines to increase by $40. It has not been an increase since, or even actually is the first increase since 2013.
Motion to approve.
I'm going to move to approve the HPMC 10.40.060 Cost and Payment Amendment.
Support.
Any discussion? Any more delays? Okay. Any changes? Dissention? Motion passes. We got that one through. Takes us show cause hearing, 23761 Davy. Roger Pinch, would you please come to the podium?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Roger is making his way here. This is a dilapidated garage. It is substantially blighted, and I will let Mr. Pinch speak further on this matter.
I'll put it real simply. It's dangerous. It needs to come down immediately.
This, this has got to go. So we'll make sure that we time the demolition in such a way that...
Is there anyone here representing 23761 Davy in the audience?
When we were out to do the inspection at the time of three or four months back, the owner was at the property, and he indicated he understood that this garage needed to be taken down, but he was incapable of financially tackling the project. So we told him we were moving forward with the hearing officer, and that's where we left off.
Just wanted to make that clear for the record that the applicant wasn't here. And is there any way we can find any resources for him through the county to help him take this down if he's not capable of affording?
I was not involved in any of that.
I do not believe so, Mr. Mayor. This is substantially dilapidated garage. This needs to come down. It's a threat to health and safety.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, proper notice has been provided to the homeowner and to the garage owner.
Thank you. Council, the recommended motion at the bottom of the page?
I'll move the recommended motion. Based on the garage's only, it's 100% dilapidated, subject to collapsing. Demolition is required. And that the hearing officer ordered the garage to be demolished by November 23. So, oh, this is, I'm sorry, that was the old motion. I'm moving that we have this torn down. Should this be within 30 days as an emergency?
We'll, we'll tear it down as fast as we can tear it down to make sure that we're not incurring these costs on our own. So we now have a schedule, and we check with the treasurer to make sure that we're not eating these costs. And this is going off to auction at Oakland County, and we'll be stuck with the cost. So, but we will get it down as soon as possible.
I'll finish with, I'm also affirming the hearing officer's order to have the garage demolished.
A second.
Any more discussion? Assention? Thank you for that, Roger. I would like to open it up to 23858 Vassar Avenue, show cause hearing. Anyone here representing that property? Seeing no one for the record. Roger, what would be your comment?
Mr. Mayor, before Roger begins, we're going to deal specifically with the garage tonight. The, there is a hearing officer hearing tomorrow afternoon that will deal with the rest of the House on this property. So tonight, we're gonna request that you take action to demolish the seriously ridiculously dilapidated garage at that property that needs to go.
And just for council, please know that notice has been proper.
Yes.
Roger?
It's, it's definitely the, the entire roof is completely collapsed, and walls are moving, shifting. It's ready to tumble down.
Thank you, sir. Council?
I move, based on building official Roger Pinch's inspection report dated December 7, 2023, a garage demolition is required as the structure's roof has collapsed, walls failure occurring, and dangerous conditions are existing. Ellen Miglia failed to show the hearing, failed to follow the hearing officer's orders dated December 13, 2023, to have garage demolished by January 13, 2024. And based upon the inspection report from December 7, 2023, that has been written up by the building official Roger Pinch, that the garage is required to be demolished, that the structure roof has collapsed, walls failure occurring, and dangerous conditions are existing, also being 100% damaged and deteriorated, and the health, welfare, and safety of the community of Hazel Park, the garage be demolished within 30 days.
Support. Any discussion? Assention?
Yes, sir.
Motion passes. Thank you, Roger, for coming out and waiting through the whole evening to get to those hearings. And that will take us to old business. Anyone have any old business? See new business?
Old business, I just wanted to remind people that the, of the date of the grand opening of the new park playscape at Green Acres is going to be, what's the date? Do we have on that?
The 20th, 4/20.
4/20.
4/20.
Just know, because it's National Record Store.
At 11:00 AM, right?
4/20 at 11:00 AM. That is our target set forth by the county.
Which is who we were waiting on. But it's a nice update, so that will officially be open to the public. All of the finalization will have been applied and installed, and it'll be nice and safe for all the kids to enjoy it all spring and summer.
Yep. They were waiting on the pouring of the concrete. I know some of the kids have evaded the, I'm saying, I can't blame them. We ask that you not do that, but I understand, and it should be...
The weather's been too nice, sir.
And we'll get that dedicated on the 20th.
Thank you. New business or...
I have something. Just a minor thing. I wonder if May is Tourette Awareness Month. I wonder if we could get a, we've done a resolution on this before. I wonder if we could get...
You can get a resolution for Tourette.
Thank you.
Oh, while we're there, if we could also do a Huntington's Disease Resolution, I'm 90% sure that that's also May.
May it is.
I believe May is also Mental Health Awareness Month.
Hell, yeah.
It all kind of goes.
Oh, and the, the orange, the wear orange, that's, does that make too, the gun violence?
Yes, modest man to action.
All right. Y'all got some work.
I think we're gonna probably announce all of these and publish them for everybody to read at the...
You can all take turns.
We appreciate it. We'll have one each. We'll have one each.
Some meet, some months are that way. But, yes, it is.
Mr. Mayor, under new business, I would like to express our condolences to the family of our electrical inspector, Mr. Tom Herndon, who passed away somewhat unexpectedly a couple of weeks ago. And I would also like to extend our condolences to the family of former Madison Heights Council member Richard Clark, who passed away, I saw this morning. He was well-known to Mike Webb and Andy Licuro and myself. He was a fixture in southeast Oakland County for several decades, a longtime council member from Madison Heights, and simply a good man and a good person, and I always enjoyed my interactions with him. He was someone who was born in Hazel Park, of course, so we'll claim that for him, and moved to Madison Heights and was always active in Madison Heights, and always cared about Hazel Park, and all frequently came down to support our events as well.
Richard had a great heart.
He did.
He spoke up for a lot of clauses. He was a good person.
He was fighting the fight with us in revenue sharing back in the 2000s.
Yes, he did. Any other comments? I'd like to also bring forth the, one of our elected officials from the past. He served on the school board for many, many years, Bob Scott.
Absolutely.
Scott family were here for many, many years. They were part of the Masons as well here. Bob also had an Ashley Scott Funeral Home that sat behind rallies over here for many, many decades. And he was represented very well in this community for a lot of years and supported a lot of community events. And he passed away the last three weeks ago. And greatly missed. Very nice gentleman.
Also, the family, condolences to the family of Tina Knapp, who was a longtime Hazel Park school employee and well-known in the community as well. Layback Lenny of Lenny's Airbrushing, condolences to his family as well. Longtime Hazel Park business of some note. His artwork is quite famous across the country, so we extend our condolences to his family as well.
Any other comments? Thank you. There's communications from the department heads. Any department heads? Tim Young?
Tim Young is approaching the microphone.
He is.
We weren't even finished, and he was out of his seat.
Yeah.
Just a reminder, April 27th is our Earth Day event at DBW. So, anyone that has any type of recyclables, paint, household hazardous waste, old electronics, you can bring it there, drop it off, we'll dispose of it for you, and it costs you nothing. So, it'll save you a trip of driving out of town to drop it off at Sacoa. But that's April 27th. I don't have the flyers, so I can't promise you the time right now.
Did you say paint?
Paint, yes.
One more thing. Is May still Concrete Month? You guys are picking up...
I haven't heard.
You've been doing it...
Sure, I'm sure it is, but I don't want to quote that.
If it is, can you put it on the webpage, please?
Sure.
So people can know that.
Sure.
We'll find out and take care of that.
Loose concrete breaks for a month. They pick it up...
I meant like concrete, like appreciation month.
I'll just, I'll get you a resolution for that one as well, Counselor.
Well, it's been that way for a lot of, I have...
Whereas, concrete has been a staple of Western civilization since...
Since Roman times.
We're going to make sure Ed gets the asphalt one.
There you go. Yeah, there'll be, if, if the concrete is a pickup this year, there is a limit on how much can go out. Our guys can only handle so much, so. And then, speaking of concrete, we have, we have contractors in town working all about the city doing concrete work, so please be cautious of all the barrels and the different work crews that are going to be out in the roadway. Just slow down a little bit and give them some room. Thanks.
Wait, 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 wait. Hey, Tim. I know we previously had a discussion about having rain barrels at the Earth Day event. Is that a thing that we're trying to do still?
I'll check.
Okay, thank you.
If you, we did have rain, we did actually do a rain barrel event in Hazel Park about 10 years ago, where people brought rain barrels for sale for a nominal amount of money, and we had someone come and train everybody in how to install it with your gutter and everything like that. Serene set that up. I'll see if she still has that contact.
Oh, we like that.
Sounds awesome.
Yeah, I like that.
I still have my rain barrel.
Let me know, I got barrels I give you.
This one's...
Thanks.
Thank you.
Communications for this, any other department heads in the audience want to talk?
Lacy, Jimmy, Amanda?
I do have a, I do have a comment. I had, I had, someone called me up and said that Jimmy Finkley is a wonderful person and helped him out greatly last couple of weeks ago. I just want to let you know, I got a great comment.
There you go. Ready to go, Jimmy.
Jimmy is a wonderful person, and he is very helpful.
All right, let's take us to the city attorney, Mr. Schwartz.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Always so quiet. City manager.
You know, I'm, I'm glad that we're passing another resolution on revenue sharing. Obviously, what is old is new again. And as I always say, Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken. And one way that we could go a great deal of distance to repair that broken system of municipal finance is to make sure that we fully fund revenue sharing the way that it was statutorily envisioned and constitutionally envisioned years ago when they wrote the new Michigan Constitution back in 1964. So, I'm hopeful that the legislature will act this time, and I'm hopeful that they will address the headly Prop. A interaction, which they can do legislatively through taking a look at the Enabling Action for Proposal A. So, again, I thank you all. I want to thank my department heads and employees for doing a fantastic job. Our police department had an extraordinary week last week, and they made some important arrests and took some very dangerous individuals off the streets, and at the same time caught a very prolific ring of jewel thieves as well. So, they were very, did a very good job. So, my hats are off to our officers and all the other employees in the city of Hazel Park who do a great job serving the residents every day.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Malondo?
Ooh. First? Had the pleasure of spending the last few days at Cuyahoga Valley National Park in Ohio. If you ever get the chance, check it out. It's a cute little town, and it was happening on the path of totality for the eclipse. So, if you have the opportunity to go outside and check it out, you know how awesome it was. And if you haven't ever seen an eclipse in the path of totality, highly recommend it. The next one is in 20 years, so mark your calendars. My mom and dad's 38th wedding anniversary is April 19th, so I'd like to wish them happy anniversary. April 19th is also Bicycle Day and 4/20, so happy holidays to people if you celebrate those. Again, the ceasefire folks, I see you, I hear you, and I appreciate you coming out to our city council meeting. And I want to speak specifically to the young gentleman who is here tonight. I started coming to city council meetings in Marquette, where I grew up. I think I was a freshman in high school, the very first city council meeting I attended. And I like to think that that's part of why I'm up here today. So, just the fact that you're here today lets me know that the kids are all right. So, thank you for coming, and I hope no matter what happens, the losses, the wins, you know, politics is challenging, and administration and governing are challenging, but I hope you never lose the drive that brought you here tonight. So, just please stay engaged, and I really hope to see you at future city council meetings. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Licuro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's great weather out there, so watch out for the bicyclists. And as always, the bicyclists are required. If you're driving at night, you're supposed to have lights on there. And I, many years ago, I learned that by nearly hitting somebody else on their bicycle, making it turn, and I realized how badly I needed to mod my bike. That was quite a long time ago. As I've said many times, if you love somebody, tell them. If you have children, hug them and tell them you love them every day. And thank you for coming out, participating in the democratic process.
Councilperson Washington.
Again, thank you so much to everybody that took their time and their courage to step up and speak to us today at the podium. Again, just going to recognize everybody. Mike, Stella, Mariah, Paula, Suheer, Tanya, Megan, and Ryan. Everybody has a voice, and we appreciate you. I just want to make a comment on the ceasefire situation, and I know a lot of you think that we might not, we might be a little cold to the issue. However, I don't think anyone on this council has experience working with refugees and people from that type of area and situation that I do. So, I don't want you to think that of me. I'm sorry. But I have a lot of friends from that area. I have a lot of friends that I still speak to. I worked with the refugees from the Afghan situation, and so I just, I feel very closely to anyone speaking on any type of issue when it comes to refugee work and, or displacement from war and all of that. So, I just wanted to make that known. Thank you. Sorry.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
I also want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I want to echo a little bit of what Andrea was saying, that there is a difference between not caring and doing your job. And there is a definite difference between the limitations of what is in our purview as city council members and what we see in our purview as, as city council members. And just because we don't necessarily feel that that is an appropriate resolution for us to make, it does not mean that there aren't members up on this board that aren't doing work as individuals, as residents, as taxpayers with our elected officials at higher levels. So, please, please keep that in mind. There's some language that's been sent to many of us over emails that's very inflammatory, it's very accusatory, and it's flat out untrue. So, on a lighter note, I want to thank everybody who requested eclipse glasses from me this last month. I sent out over 50 pairs. I was really excited to have people really participate and to give people access to that in our community. I also want to remind people there is a way that you can recycle those, and they will be donated to Latin American schoolchildren through Astronauts Without Borders. There is a link, an address on my webpage, or on my Facebook and my Instagram, and it's the cost of one stamp to mail that and get those recycled and get them to children in Latin America. Also, I wanted to announce that I was elected the president of the Arts Council last month and hosted my first official president meeting last, last night. Thank you. Ms. Hall was there. It was a lovely meeting. We had it at Ideation Oranges Event Space, which is beautiful. And we, at that time, approved funding for art installations in the community for a photography art exhibit coming, an international photography art exhibit coming to the Metro Detroit area called Nova 24. That will be happening in June, so keep your eye out for that. We are hoping to also do some sort of potential scavenger hunt or something along with that, those art installations. They're going to be a really unique process where they are placed directly, they're, they're art prints, but they are placed directly onto buildings or windows, and they're transparent. They cause no damage, and it's a local business that does this. And I also wanted to remind people that the Hazel Park Art Fair is August 24th and 25th of this year. We are still accepting applications. We currently have 64 applications in. We have two food trucks that have been invited back, and then we are also always seeking volunteers for that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before you make your final comments, I just want to point out, Alyssa said that you can send the glasses to Latin America. She's got the link. Our Treasury Department here in the city of Hazel Park, you can drop your eclipse glasses off there. We will collect them, and we will send them, and it won't even cost you a stamp. So, all you need to do is drop them off here, and we'll take care of that for you. And I want to thank Alyssa for dropping off a couple extra pairs. We were trying to cobble together eclipse glasses in city hall at the last minute. During the last eclipse in 2017, the library had a lot of them. This time, they didn't, so we were scrambling. She dropped off a couple pairs, and we were able to get like seven or eight. So, everybody and the patrons and court clients and everyone else was out passing those eclipse glasses around so they could see it. It was a cool event. And so, thank you, and now we will share that event with other people across the world and give them a chance to see that cool eclipse as well.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to everyone for coming out this evening. I also like to say thank you to my colleagues for speaking up and having a participation in our meeting. We have a very philosophical beliefs up here about how things should go, and I think we're all happy how things go. We work together well. Our job here is a lot more different from what some people may think. Are we set budgets, goals, objectives? We read, write ordinances, delete ordinances, change ordinances, and we do community involvement and resources for our residences and protect our parks. We talked about stop signs, speed limits. We have so many little things we have to try to make. It just sounds trivial sometimes, but those trivial little things make a difference in our communities. And also protects our children and the residents walking through our sidewalks and, you know, curb appeals and changing the streetscapes, the tree scapes. And we all get beat up about our tree scape, so I'm going to be wrong. But, and thanks to Megan, she's brought a lot to us. But, on the other hand, it's a big deal because over 40 years, 50 years down the road, they'll be doing this again. You know, it's just a constant thing that we have to do. But we also have our DPW, our water department does a lot of resourcing, our DPW, Tom does a lot of resourcing. Our police department, we wouldn't have the opportunity to have such great police and fire protection here if we didn't have the ability to have enough funds and have a taking that cut over the years of the state's shared revenues. That has been a cut, this cut deep in many years that we had in the past that hurt us really bad. We had to lay off people. We had to lay off half the fire department one time because we couldn't afford it. Then we got a millage pass to fund the fire department and help the police department as well. And that's still going, but that is strictly to help continue the fight to protect our residences here, and that's what our jobs are here as a board. That is our complete goal and objectives here. Not that we don't want to pass a resolution, we just feel that that resolution for you guys would be wrong for us to do that. We're going to do it. We feel for you. We appreciate you out here. You can come up and speak, give your banter. We don't mind. That is, it's freedom of speech. That's what you have a right to do, and we appreciate you coming up. It's not that we're out to slander anyone, but we have a job to do, and we're going to hold our line, and that's how we're going to do it. And we appreciate your coming out and giving us the information. And any other comments from anyone? Motion to adjourn.
One thing I will say is that during that timeframe, is that the residents did step up and make sure that we had the resources. But also, our employees, we all took a 10% pay cut one year and then followed it up the next year with another 2.5% pay cut on top of that.
It was, thank you to our employees took all kinds of things.
So, there were a lot of sacrifices that went all the way around from this community, and every other city in Michigan that had a taxable value per capita like Hazel Park went under state control. We were the only one that didn't.
You know what the biggest question is, to stay on this? The biggest question, and you've got it too, and you have too, back in the day, how'd you guys pull it off? How'd you get everybody to take those pay cuts? They're union jobs. Because they noticed that they cared enough about their community, and you guys wouldn't be here if you didn't care about your community either. And we're all part of it, and that we can work together, find a better way, and we appreciate everyone. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. (applause)